I'd like to call the February 13th Regional City Council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation. Tonight, we have a substitute for the Reverend Clarence Johnson, our very own Major Ronnie Ellison, who's a deacon at Shallow Baptist Church. If you pray for us.
Good evening, everyone. Let's go through the Lord in prayer. Our Hail the Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the city of Reesville and all the leaders. Lord, right now, we invite you into this meeting. Lord, we ask that what do we say first? That we give you your honor and the glory and the praise? It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Could we all rise? Well, the pledge of allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have proclamations and recognition. Just do the proclamation from here. And this proclamation is to recognize Black History Month. Whereas February has been designed or designated as Black History Month and will be observed in our community with a series of special presentations and exhibits, with this observance affording the special opportunity for local residents to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. Whereas such knowledge can only be served to strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers to equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. Now therefore, I Don Lill Gorham, Mayor of the City of Reesville, on behalf of the Regional City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February to be Black History Month in Reesville, and further urge all students to join together in making this a period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. This is the 13th day of February 2024.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have recognition of City Information and Technology Department as the city's first team award winners. Director Sherrell Williams, Gilbert Nozel, and Steve Eastwood. I'll just read this from here also, and then I'll come down front. The Outstanding Teamwork Award recognizes employees from any division or department who have worked together in an exceptional manner to perform an assigned task as a team. Recipients of the award can be nominated by their peers or their supervisor. If members of the Employment Engagement Committee will review all of the nominations received for the year and select a recipient before the annual employee holiday meal. These are three top guns in Reesville. Outstanding teamwork award for 2023. The city of Reesville would like to make. Well, you are outstanding team. You have a board beyond the scope of regular day-to-day duties and responsibilities as members of a highly functioning team. And this is a highly functional team. Thank you for your contribution to our organization and for being a central part of our team in Reesville. Representative Sherrell Williams, recognition of your outstanding teamwork on February And Gilbert. I want to insert. You guys got a big handle over there. Got any words?
I was like, uh, thank my team and, as you said, the team Reesville, thank the city manager, the council, and the whole team here at the city of Reesville. We really enjoy being able to support, answer any questions, and just come out where we can. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you. And what Renal would say, we love you. Y'all thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the consent agenda. There are four items. Is there anyone who'd like to have one pulled?
Mayor, I would like to have the consideration of residential lease agreement for the Penn House apartment pulled so that we can further evaluate it and understand it better.
Okay.
Maybe we could pull it until our retreat.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. That'd be good. That'd be best. Anyone else? Can I get a motion on the three items that remain?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing those in favor, raise your right hand. Is unanimous? Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing, consideration of an application to rezone the following properties. 129 East Morehead Street, 150 South Harris Street, Rocketham County Tax Parcel Number 18201111, Northeast Market Street, Rocketham Tax Parcel Number 154991, 121 Hall Street, Rocketham County Tax Parcel 154943, a vacant parcel located on Hall Street, Rocketham County Tax Parcel 182009, and a landlocked vacant parcel, Rocketham County Tax Parcel 154948, from industrial to general business. City staff submitted an application, docket number Z2024-01, enclosure one, Jason Hart, Planning and Community Development Director, already in place.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Good evening. This is a rezoning application submitted by City of Reesville planning staff to rezone one, two, three, four, five, six parcels, and the mayor just read off all the parcel numbers, so I won't repeat those again, but it's six separate parcels. They're all contiguous, located on the eastern side of the city, across the tracks, and we're petitioning to rezone them from I-1 and I-2. Several of them are heavy industrial, which is I-2, and then I-1, which is light industrial. They're all located in the area designated, well, not designated, but supposed to be a part of what we call the Depot District. And if you've read the article of the Ian's Home Journal this past week, it got a lot of attention on the city's Facebook pages. The Depot District is a concept at this point of revitalizing that eastern part of the city into a livable mixed-use district. Modern cottage walkable living, I think, is the language from the plan. And around 2019, 2020, the city commissioned the plan for the proposed Depot District. It's still just a concept now. Council has not adopted it, so it's still just a concept at this point. Public forum was held to get input from citizens. However, like I said, it hasn't been adopted yet. Anything in the current plan is subject to change. I'll briefly go through some of the high points. I'm not going to go too deep into the plan because it's still just a concept at this point. We're not asking for adoption of the plan. This is just to give you some context on why we're petitioning to rezone these parcels. So we can flip through here, and these are some kind of the, these are just kind of concepts when they were designing the plan of seeing like walkability, outdoor dining, that sort of thing. Of course, someone would have to come in and do this. This is just a concept of what we would like to see here. Those are some existing community assets that people felt were existing and things they'd like to see in the new Depot District. Here's the map. So this outlines some kind of desired land uses that they'd like to see in the area, neighborhood shopping, beer garden, artist spaces, a dog park, new townhomes. So in this area, actually to the right in that outlined square or rectangle, the upper right portion is the Avs Electric Building, where of course, you know, the Mac and Go facility, which the city has, you know, sold to Mac and Go for it to do apartments, and the business incubator off a co-working office space in the metal building, and also includes the former armory. That's one of the parcels that we're petitioning to rezone. Also includes the chicken shack off of Hall Street and two small vacant parcels. They're directly contiguous to that because they would like to reopen the chicken shack. That's what we've been told at some point. And the armory, the new armory would like to use it for some kind of commercial use. We're not entirely sure of what yet. So basically, what this will be doing is kind of just opening the door to commercial development. I would kind of see it as a phase zero, maybe phase one and a half, because you're, it's just going to be vanilla, general business, no conditional use, no design standards. It's not going to be a planned district at this point. However, if council would like it to be a planned district, you know, we're working on the UDO, New Development Ordinance. We could put a planned district option in the new ordinance that we can use with the Depot District for design standards. The plan goes into depth about various design standards for new construction and so forth. Looks like we're having a small issue there. But that's just a gist of kind of what we were looking, what the public feedback was from the plan when they actually put this concept together. However, of course, like I said, it can be altered, it can be amended, we can not do it. That's an option as well. Like I said, there is mostly vacant industrial properties adjacent to the railroad tracks. We all know how crucial the railroad was in the founding of Reesville and how much industry kind of cropped up there. But however, a large portion of it has been abandoned along with the armory. So we're kind of seeing a push in, we're not, this isn't something that's only for Reesville, like we're seeing this in other cities too, where these former industrial districts that have kind of been abandoned to an extent are, we're trying to revitalize them into more commercial districts. So definitely not something that's unique to Reesville, really. Let's see, let me try. The properties are located in Growth Management Area Two Urban, which encompasses the area immediately outside of the central business district. This is just east of downtown, basically. GMA Two prioritizes the expansion of housing stock alternatives, rehabilitation of existing housing stock, preservation of significant historic structures, and provides provisions for expanding retail and commercial services. In GMA Two, there is an identified lack of neighborhood-scale retail services, so we feel that this rezoning would meet that need and the intent of the plan in that regard. Therefore, we determine that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2022 Reesville Land Development Plan. The planning staff recommend that the application be approved, and the planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed rezoning be approved. And I'll be glad to answer any next questions.
So anyone have any questions? Jason? Okay, if not, the public hearing will start at 6:17. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the rezoning of the six parcels?
I have a question. Did you say there was going to be mixed housing either?
But that's part of the plan with the, at least at this point, for the Avs Electric Building, our residential.
With restaurants inside.
As far as the availability of a plan is just at this point.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, the public hearing will close at 6:18. End of discussion amongst council.
We've been looking at this for a while, and it's pretty exciting if it comes to fruition, so.
It'll give a small town a big town look. Are no other questions or any discussion?
Jason, you did say that the Hart family is planning on reopening their restaurant?
That's why I've seen the conversation that I've had also with someone else.
From what I understand, that's definite.
Historical spot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and, as may be amended, as incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
We have a motion as our second.
Does she second it?
Barbara, did you second?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I can, I can hear you. Yes.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda is a budgetary item, consideration of repair to community swimming pool and accompanying budget ordinance amendment, enclosure two, Heather Whitson, Reesville YMCA.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, for giving me this opportunity to come and speak on behalf of the YMCA and the Reesville Community Pool. Our beloved community pool is going to reach the ripe old age of 27 years old this June. She's beginning to show a little bit of that age. So over the last year, we've been putting in some repairs to keep it running as it should. We did, excuse me, some electrical repairs to contact her, replaced some of our entry doors to the swimming pool. We had to do about a $20,000 repair to our Aon unit. That's the unit that takes the chloramines and the humidity out of the pool to make it healthier for the folks that are swimming. And we also just changed the sand in the filters out to glass. It's more economical move to make, and it has about twice the longevity of using sand. At this point, we are in need of a roof repair. I did send to council the three bids there for the roof, also included the information for the repair that I've already taken place. I'm coming back for help with payment of the roof repairs. We do have right now, the amount has to go up a little since the memo, $24,781 in our reserve account. So my ask is kind of two-pronged, a Plan A or Plan B. So the Plan A, we ask for 50% help on the replacement of that roof. Total is $71,325, which would be $35,662.50, split between the Y and the city of Reesville. Plan B situation is we could use $20,000 that's in that reserve account, still leaving about, say, of about $4,700, and then the ask would be $25,663 for the roof replacement. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions?
My question is, is if we use $20,000 of the reserve money, what is the rest of that money used for? And then we're going to find you coming back asking for money for something else later on.
Sure. Excellent question. So that reserve account consists of a percentage of all income that comes into the swimming pool? So that reserve account will replenish itself? And we have not dipped into that account, I believe, in the past four years. If it's a smaller repair, typically I would come to City Manager and ask for permission to use that reserve account, but it's never used without permission. And again, we expect that to increase. We have seen an increase in programming in the community pool. We've added a water aerobics class. The YMCA has been fortunate enough to be awarded a grant to teach free swim lessons for the community for the past three years, and that's been renewed as well. So we're consistently seeing increasing income streams. So again, that reserve account should be able to replenish itself.
Any other questions?
How many members do you have at the Y right now?
Members total, we have, it's different ways to look at it. We have over about 7,000 units. I know that we present quarterly to the city of Reesville usage information for the city, and I have contacted our corporate office to see, because it's kind of hard to quantify, because we have Reesville city residents who have purchased pool passes, will purchase water aerobics, will purchase swim lessons, and they're getting the discounted city rate. But we also have Reesville YMCA members who, of course, are office city residents. So it's hard to pull those two apart. But I've been told if I could get a listing of the streets in Reesville city proper, as well as the house numbers that are included, we could give you more detailed information, not just city versus member, but members who live in the city. We have seen an increase, 2022 over 2023 usage, non-duplicated, that means counting one person one time, of about 16%, and duplicated of about 28%. So definitely an increase in usage. We are back to pre-2020 usage levels in the pool. Of course, that impacted a lot during that time.
Any other questions?
What is the cost for non-members just to come swim?
So if you are a Reesville city resident and you're an adult, it's $5. A child, it's four.
In certain hours each day?
It is. The other restrictions we have between members and non-members are for our youth. If we're having swim lessons or water aerobics or programming in the pool, we really can't have kiddos in there. But outside of those programmatic hours, there are no restrictions versus an adult city member or an adult YMCA member.
Any other questions?
I noticed that on affordable roofing, their price is the lowest. Do they, are they going to do everything that some of these others have done, or did they cut back on certain things?
We have had success as the YMCA as a whole with using affordable roofing. They are definitely affordable roofing, but we've had good results and quality product. They just re-roofed the entire middle portion of the Y, so the oldest portion of the Y has just been replaced, and we've had a really good return on investment with that. The product that they use is actually, it was created to be the lining of indoor swimming pools, but they saw that it had such a great retention of water and repels water that they've made that product into a roof covering. Again, all the research that we have done, my maintenance director worked with me on this as well, he felt very comfortable, although it is the lowest bid, and we don't always go with the lowest bid, we feel the most comfortable with affordable roofing based on our past history and the quality of the product.
Thank you.
You, I noticed in here, he's got a 15-year and a 20-year warranty, $1,400 upgrade. Is that additional to the $71,325?
I didn't include that in the proposal to City Council, the Y would cover that. We would definitely go ahead and get that additional five years, but that portion would be covered by the Y.
Okay, so y'all are going to get the five years.
Yeah, absolutely. It's definitely worth that money.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Could you give us the numbers again on the Plan A, Plan B?
Absolutely. If we utilize some of those $20,000 worth of the reserve funds, it's $25,663. If we leave the reserve funds as is, it's $35,662.50.
Counsel, it looks like we have a Plan A and a Plan B for budget ordinance number 15. What's your favor?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve budget ordinance amendment number 15 in the amount of $36,000.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I got a question. So is he proposing that we use some of the money from the $25,000 funding? Or are you proposing?
No, that would, that wouldn't be a part of it.
I asked the Y, since she said that funding hasn't been touched in four years, and it's constantly replenishing itself, so I wouldn't go ahead and utilize some of that on such a major project, save the taxpayers some money. Appears we'd be splitting that, so we'd both save about $10,000 apiece, correct?
Correct.
You have no future plans to use that funding, correct?
No, just the same way that we did in the past.
Use your mic to carry.
She heard me.
Yeah, same way we would use it in the past, just to have it there as a buffer for any large asks. We could offset that with part of the reserve request.
That's probably one of the largest things right now, you know. I don't, I'm not sure how we would proceed, but I would think we'd want to try to utilize some of this funding. We hadn't used it in over four years, according to her, and it's consistently replenishing. What would you be, what else would we be saving that money for before we would decide to dip into it that you would know of?
Just for informational purposes, it will replenish itself at about $3,000 to $4,000 per year, depending on the income to the pool.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is what would be the purpose? Is there any other projects you see coming up in the next four years, three years, it would be replenished in three years, that you would see needing to save that money for?
And speaking with council previously, we do have the Aon unit, the unit I spoke that we had repairs on before. That is in the foreseeable future, but not in the immediate future to need additional repairs.
It means foreseeable, one month, a year, two, couple of years?
We would hope four to five years.
So then that money would be replenished by then, and then some, in this funding, in the $25,000 funding?
If you do the $3,000 to $4,000, it would be almost replenished, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And then we could hopefully use some of that for the Aon funding. I would like to see us use some of the funding for that, because it seems to be, it's just sitting there and it has no general purposes or uses in the foreseeable future.
And Mayor, Council, if I may ask a question of Ms. Heather. So the funding that we have that account for, that's for emergency funding though, correct? Those are for that unexpected, it's not for projects that you're planning for to dip in. It's where she has that emergency reserve, she immediately would come and notify me, which I'd notify council, that, hey, this broke down that we didn't anticipate for. Is that correct?
You're exactly right.
And that's why you're saying if we do dip into it, if you have an unforeseen emergency repair, it's going to take you quite a while to build that back up.
The intention of the reserve was for emergencies.
And then looking at the age of the pool, 27 years for a pool is not quite like 27 years for a human being. You're all getting a little old when you're 27 years old as a, as a pool. So I think it would be wise to keep that money in reserve just in case something does pop up.
I disagree now, but that wasn't the way it was explained until she. Because I asked, you know, I specifically asked, what are we using this for?
That was an excellent question.
In the way that.
It was a good question. It was a good question. All right, we've got a motion on Plan A, and we've got a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consideration of acceptance of a $300,000 state budget allocation for parks and recreation facilities and accompanying budget ordinance amendment. In closure three, I don't see Chris here, but I see his standing.
Mayor and counsel, if you may, I'll present this, and we also have our assistant city manager, Mr. Haywood Cloud as well. So what you have before you tonight is the city of Reedsville was fortunate to receive state budget appropriation for $300,000 to make some facility improvements. This money is to be spent as follows. A new gym floor for $135,000, tennis court refurbishment for $100,000, and the preparation of new pickleball courts, which I know all of our residents are excited about, near the existing JC Park for $65,000. An official scope of work was completed related to this appropriation, and the signed contract was turned, was in turn generated. The proceeds are received by the city on January 22 of 2024, so no additional city funds are anticipated to complete these projects. At this time, we're asking the city council to accept this award and approve the attached budget ordinance amendment as presented. In addition, city staff would like to officially thank Representative Reese Perdle and Senator Phil Berger for working so hard to secure these funds for our citizens. Thank you so much.
Any questions of some? Be hard to say anything bad about receiving $300,000. Is there a motion? Do we have to have two? One for the exception? Okay. Is there a motion for the exception, acceptance of the $300,000?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, now for budget ordinance amendment 16.
I move.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I'd like to do three or four more of those. Next on the agenda, consideration of acceptance of a $1.6 million state budget allocation for the Antipen Outfall and Accompanying Capital Project Ordinance and Budget. Ordinance Amendment, enclosure four. It's almost Christmas. And some will do that one, too.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. The city of Reedsville was very fortunate to receive a state budget appropriation for $1,600,000 for rehabilitation of a 1,630 linear feet section of sewer outfall. These lines service Piedmont Street area and include service to Antipen Hospital. This area was listed as the highest priority in the city's 2019 sewer system asset inventory. While the plans were in direct appropriation, the attached request for funding was required to be filed with the NC Department Environmental Quality Division of Water Infrastructure. Additionally, DEQ is retaining 3% of the appropriation, which is $48,000, as an administrative fee. This will reduce the actual recipient of the funds to $1,552,000. The city's sewer reserves will be needed to replenish these funds for the project, along with additional engineering and administrative costs of $50,000, for a total use of $98,000. At this time, we're asking the city council to accept this award and approve the attached capital project ordinance so that the project can begin. The capital project ordinance is being used because this project will be completed over multiple fiscal years. The attached budget ordinance amendment will also need to be approved to appropriate the necessary transfer sewer reserves to the project. And again, the city of Reedsville would specifically like to thank Senator Phil Berger and Representative Reese Perdle for again securing these funds for our citizens of Reedsville.
Are there three motions to this bill? Okay.
It's three.
Okay. All right. Any questions of some? Seeing none, is there a motion for the acceptance of 1.6 million?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, a double second. Any discussion?
Sorry.
Oh, you're good. I'm making a funny. There's no discussion. All those in favor of the acceptance of 1.6 million, please raise your right hand. Is there a motion for the state budget allocation for Antipen?
Be dead again.
Capital project. State budget allocation to Antipen, it's the capital, capital project ordinance. Seeing none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Listen, Barbara.
Can't hear you. Say it again.
On the capital ordinance. We lost it.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. Okay. All right, and finally, budget ordinance amendment 17. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you. Next item...
Once again, we're so thankful to Reese Perdle and...
Senator Berger.
Senator Berger. They have been very good to us.
We've had Christmas in February. Next item on the agenda, consideration of fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget calendar and work session, enclosure five. Some would, city manager.
Mayor and counsel, what you have before you tonight is just looking for acceptance of the proposed budget calendar. So this is for fiscal year 2425, and I'm just going to briefly go over the dates. So February 13th and 24th, we're going to present this calendar to city council. February 15th and 16th, we'll have our city council annual retreat. It will officially start at 8:30 and go to 12:30. And here we have from 8 to 1, 8 to 8:30 will be for breakfast, and then from 12:30 to 1 will be for lunch. So that will be this Thursday and Friday, and it will be at our new event center at the penthouse. Then the next part will be, the first part for our budget, for department heads will be March 4. Budget detail we presented to management team and department supervisors. And then on March 22, finance department completes initial revenue projections. April 4, all budgets submitted to the city manager's office by 5:00 p.m. Then we'll do work sessions with those department heads, April 8 through the 19th. And then April 23, we'll have a budget work session with the city council at 5:30. And then April 24 through May the 10th, preparation of the fiscal year 2425 budget. We will present the proposed budget to city council, May 14 of 2024, with an additional work session, May 21 of 2024 at 5:30 p.m. And then we will hold, hold our public hearing and adoption, June 11 of 2024. That's what we've outlined for this year.
Any questions of some? Do we have a motion for the 2024, 2025 budget calendar and work session?
Motion to accept.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Willie got the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next on the agenda, consideration of bids for CDBG-NR Housing Rehabilitation, enclosure six, Jason Harden, planning and community development director.
Mayor and counsel, and the city manager, in your agenda packets are proposed bid awards to rehabilitate three houses as part of our Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Rehabilitation Project, and closes the bid tabulation sheet, along with contractor's work library, insurance certification for each contractor. There's three separate houses. The first one is 322 Urban Street. Tucker's Home Repair was the low bidder at $142,250. The second house was 1342 McGeehe Street. Brookdale NC Environmental was the low bidder at $86,600. And 710 Vance Street, Brookdale Inc. was, Brookdale Inc. Environmental was also the low bidder at $91,400. All bids received have exceeded our budget projections, unfortunately, from the project grant application back in 2019, likely due to the substantial increase, increase in construction costs post-pandemic. The NC Department of Commerce, we had to reach out to them because if you hit over $72,000, it goes into what they call substantial rehab, so we had to get their approval. But we have gotten that approval from the Department of Commerce. No budget adjustment is necessary for these bid awards as funds are already present, and staff's asking for council approval on these items, if you would.
Any questions of Jason?
I just have a question. Being newly elected and with this project, how long has this project with the city been going on?
So we got funding in 2019, right at the end, and you know what happened in spring 2020? Everything shut down. At the state level, things kind of just ground to a halt. My impression from what happened before I got here in 2022 was that things were tied up with the state store preservation office for a long time, working through, then we had to go through a process of like, the way it works with the CBGNR and with the housing rehab project, you have a list of applicants. You have to go through the applicants and then you rule them out based off title issues, income, they have to meet HUD standards for low mod income. So going through all that process, and finally, we managed to get through that process and also the title searches on the properties. And we had to actually go through two bids on this. We bid it out last fall, two of these houses, and we only had one bidder. And the code of federal regulations requires that if you don't, if you only get one bid, you have to rebid it before you can do what they call sole source procurement, where you just take the one bid. So we bid it out again, and this is what we got back. We did get a couple more bidders, which I was pleased to see, but yeah, so it's a long road. COVID shut things down. We finally got things back going post-COVID, so.
For these three homes, these are the, the owners of these homes are the ones that live there. It's not rental type stuff.
That's correct. They have to be owner occupied.
Okay. And on the rehabilitation that's being done and the work being done, do the city have to keep up with what's being done or what type of work is being done on these homes?
So for the scopes of work, we've contracted with Piedmont Triad Regional Council as our housing rehab consultant, and they go out and do an independent assessment and determine a scope of work that we bid out. So they determine a cost estimate, they bid out the work, the contractors bid on it. Once they do the work, of course, if they have to get building permits or anything, our inspectors will inspect the work that's being done, make sure it's all done to code. So, and after that, it has to be, I think, the, has to be owner occupied for, I believe, like five years afterward by HUD rules before they can sell the property. They have to keep ownership of it for a certain amount of time before they can sell the home or move out of it.
Are they overseeing the project for the duration to make sure that you're getting what you're paying for, I guess, so to say, like, who's the project manager, so to say?
Yeah, that would be PTRC.
And is this right? You got bid opening date? Did you just collect, did you just put this out, the bid on 11/2 of '23?
That was the second bid out.
The second bid out.
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so.
The first bid out was last fall, before Christmas.
Any other questions? Bill, we need to make a motion on all three houses, separate. Any other questions? We have a motion for 322 Urban Street, Reedsville, North Carolina.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. We have a motion for 1342 McGeehe Street. We have a motion...
Some move.
And a second from Barbara. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. And we have a motion for 710 Vance Street, Reedsville, North Carolina. Got a motion?
Second.
And we got a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next item on the agenda, consideration of amendments to Chapter 9, Health and Sanitation, Article 2, nuisances, Section 9 through 20, through 9 through 26 of the City Code of Ordinances, enclosure seven. Jason Harden.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel and manager. Staff has requested to amend Chapter 9, Health and Sanitation, Article 2, nuisances, Section 9 dash 20 through 9 dash 26 of the City of Reedsville Code of Ordinances. This portion of the code was added back in 1985 and it needs a few updates. The process of noticing property owners, our department name, we're no longer the Department of Planning and Code Enforcement, which I guess we were back in 1985. It clarifies the lien is placed on the property through the Rockham County Tax Department, and it notes that nuisances may be abated by a contracted representative and not only the city's public works department, which it currently says. These updates make no change to our current practice. The purpose of the amendment is to update to current practice that it's been for over 20 years, and staff recommends that the proposed code amendment be approved. I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Jason, could you give us just a highlight of something that's been changed?
Absolutely. So, like I said, other than updating the department name and everything, so the process for noticing nuisance violations was the main thing that we updated. So we post the property, code enforcement will, you know, we get a complaint, they'll go out, they'll post the property. Within the next business day, we will mail out a notice to the property owner, and they'll have 10 days from the date of the notice to abate it. And after 10 days, our contractor will be notified and they'll abate the nuisance, like cut the grass, basically, if it's high grass. So it's fair, it gives them 10 days from the date of the notice because we don't, sometimes we don't ever get back the rate receipts. We send them all certified mail. That's been, that's in the ordinance, and we've done that for years. But sometimes, you know, the mail loses those. Sometimes we never see them again. So we go on from the date of the notice is the fairest way to, to go about it that gives you a clear benchmark on when the timeline starts. So that was in the code amendment as well.
Any other questions of Jason?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And all of these nuisances are visible. It's something that has to be seen, right?
Well, it's high grass. It's, nothing in our definition of nuisances has changed. So it's high grass, greayer than 12 inches tall, accumulations of garbage, noxious vegetation, like vines and things, those type things, nuisance vehicles, if that's like a junk vehicle has like grass growing through it. So nothing's changed with the definition of nuisances, what constitutes a nuisance. It's just the process and terminology updates, basically.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion for the consideration of amendments?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Martin and a second from Councilman Coats. Any discussion? All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Human Resources, consideration of changes to the city's personnel policy, enclosure eight, Lee Ann Basinger, human resources director.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen at council, madam manager, good evening. So in August of 22, we did a complete revision to our personnel policies. We have discovered, since we've been using those new policies for the last 16 months or so, that there were some areas that we still needed to make some changes. Probably the biggest thing was when we went through the process to become a family forward certified employer, there was a survey that was distributed to all of our employees. They all had the opportunity to respond. And one of the things that came up in that survey was the parental leave. And we do have a parental leave policy, we just somehow managed to exclude it when we revised the personnel policy. So the first thing is we're just going to put in the parental leave policy, that's both paternity and maternity leave, that we have afforded our employees as long as I've been here, it just wasn't written down anywhere. The second thing will be a change to the callback pay section. So these are our employees that are on call after their regular business hours. And we, we're using old terminology in the policy, we call them street line employees, and it's actually the public services employees. So we've included a list of all of the divisions that are eligible for that $100 per week incentive for being on call. We also removed the reference to being paid double time coming in on call on a city observed holiday. That's not a practice that's been in place in a number of years here. So we just struck that from the policy. We did add some clarification on the insurance benefits section, specifically as it relates to our retirees. If you retire from the City of Reedsville with 30 years of service in the retirement system, the last 10 of which were with the City of Reedsville, you can have retiree health insurance from the time of retirement until the age of 65. But we needed to add some language in there about what happens if you don't make the premiums, if you don't pay your premiums, if you get canceled. So that language is now in there. And then the final thing was, when we revised the personnel policy, we really wanted to give recognition to people that we were hiring from other municipal and local governments into the City of Reedsville with their sick leave service and their vacation. So if they've been 10 years with Rockingham County, we hire them, we want them to accrue as if they had been here for 10 years. What we realized is we had been hiring some folks from Virginia, and we were not giving them the same sort of vacation accrual credit for municipal service in Virginia. We cannot give them sick leave credit because they are not part of the North Carolina local government employers retirement system, so we can't give them the sick leave credit. But we can allow them to accrue vacation at a higher rate than if they were just a brand new employee that had no municipal experience. So those are the changes you got included in your packet, a whole section, so you can see all of the wording. The memo outlines what those changes were, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
I have one. Going to the callback.
Yes, sir.
Because I know it really affects your police department and your public works, getting called out in the middle of the night for things. So looking at the amount that is paid to public works at $100 a week in the police department at $50 a week, in my opinion, I think that should be even across the board in the same, if you're doing the same thing, you're getting called out, it's just different types of things you're handling.
So I don't disagree. I don't disagree. What we did, we adopted the policy as it had been for years, and you're right, we've heard from other departments. Fire department is also a $50 per week on call for the fire inspectors, fire marshal to go out to investigate arson. And so we talked about that, and when we were going through the big revision in '22, we made the decision as management team not to make that change, but it is absolutely something that we have considered, and I would be happy to entertain that and make it $100 across the city for everybody that's on call.
That would just be where I stand. If it's, if you got $100 for one, why aren't we doing it across the board for all the employees that have to be on call, that share a call week?
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of where I stand on it.
I'd like to make a motion that that is amended to the 100 across the board.
I would second that, whatever, however it was, need to do it.
And I know, I know Miss Basinger's looking heavy. We certainly, as she stated earlier, we don't see an issue with that at all. It's something we had talked about. It's one of those where it had just been in place for an annotated amount of time, so it's not that we hadn't thought about it. So I think that's a very generous gesture of mayor and council if you want to fix that and bring that up to date.
I'm happy to make those changes. I can bring them back in March, with the changes in March.
But we have to, well, sis, we should wait until March then to make the, right?
We can do that. We'll bring back the.
We'll wait, wait till March.
Thank you all.
Board and commissions appointments. As we're doing the board and commission appointments, I'd like to make an announcement that I am appointing Ronald Flax to the housing authority.
Is this something separate from Lisa? From Lisa Simpson? Oh, no.
It's another one. It's another one, yeah. This will take care of all the seats.
I couldn't hear. I can't hear for some reason.
Next on the agenda. She gone.
So are we gonna, are we proposing to bring this back, make some changes and bring it back again?
We're gonna bring that back after we make the amendment to the policy. Next thing on the agenda would be public comments. Is there anyone who'd like to come and speak before council tonight? We don't have anyone who wants to come before council. City manager report?
Mayor and council, just a, just a couple announcements. Looking forward to seeing everyone this Thursday and Friday at our retreat at the new venue at the penthouse. Also putting your packets, the lunch and learn for this year, you can see the different topics. Would encourage everyone to attend if you would like. Also, we're coming along with our splash pad. We're looking at a completion date of March 11th, 2024. We're also finishing up some minor repairs to the penthouse building project. We're very excited to have hosted our first official chamber award ceremony there last week, so I thought that went very well. So continuing to make progress there. And then our crews have done an exceptional job with our settle street gate project. The one, north side's about 50% complete, so we're on schedule there. And then lastly, we did put under, behind the miscellaneous tab in the agenda packet, the revised signed memorandum of understanding between the City of Reedsville and the Reedsville Downtown Corporation. Several of us had the opportunity to attend their annual retreat last month, and that was a good discussion. So that's signed and put under miscellaneous, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Summa. Council member reports, we'll start with Airport Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only got a couple of things to report. On January the 15th, I attended the Black History Program at Elm Grove Baptist Church. On January the 16th, I attended the YMCA Board of Directors meeting. On January the 24th, I attended the two-on-two meetings with Hugh Mayor and the members and our city manager. And on February the 5th, I participated in the McLauren Good Neighbor Association meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Council member Martin.
Before last, I attended the NRA banquet, which is an organization of the NRA that's nonprofit. They raise money, all that money comes back into the county and goes into youth outdoor activities, whether it be shooting, fishing, hunting facilities. I was trying to find what it done with my paper. I attended the two-on-two meetings as well.
Thank you, sir. Council member Scoble.
Thank you, Mayor. On January the 11th, I was a judge for the senior projects at Rockingham County High School. That was a lot of fun, and it was really rewarding to find the seniors so engaged in their products and such diversity, diversity of the different projects that they had. On January the 12th, I'm proud to say my husband became a U.S. citizen. So after 30 years, he decided that he wanted to be a citizen, and that process, we went down to Charlotte and he was sworn in.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm very proud of him. So January 23rd, the RDC had their retreat at the penthouse. January 25th, ABC board meeting. And on February the 6th, the RDC had a Zoom meeting. I'd also like to announce that on March 15th, at the Reedsville High School, will be the Kiwanis Club Pancake Supper. Tickets are $8, children 10 and under free, so be sure to get your tickets. That's a great time for everyone.
And I'll be doing some cooking at the pancake supper. I do a pretty meat pancake, so you need to come. Council member Coats.
Fourth day of January.
Okay. Due to the fact that we do have a closed session though tonight, I'm not gonna give my support, report, I'll pass it on to Angela. Who? Oh. Okay, Barbara. You got a report, Barbara?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I just want to thank all of you for bearing with me during this time of recuperating. And I was allowed to attend the February, today's advisory meeting for the RDC, and was updated on a lot of new restaurants and businesses that are coming to Reedsville, so that was quite exciting. But thank you again for allowing me to do Zoom. And thank you for all your support.
Thank you. Diane, I couldn't see you behind Bill. Oh, you're doing fine. As a matter of fact, the highlight of my time during this past reporting period was being at the Chamber of Luncheon.
Aw, well, thank you so much, everybody. I apologize for my absence the last meeting. We've just had a lot of sickness, and thank you to everybody for all your prayers. And my father-in-law did come home from the hospital today, so I am very thankful and blessed for the health of all of our family members. I will be really quick, because I know you guys have a lot to do, and we are kind of in a slower season, but we are just coming out of the annual awards, which I was so thrilled to be at the event center at the penthouse. It was so beautiful. You guys had a full table. Thank you so much for your support, and we've heard nothing but really, really great things about the event center and about the space, and PD helped us with the park in and the flow of traffic on the street, and I didn't hear one single complaint. So it'll be even better when we have the parking lot across the street ready, but we are really thankful for that. Upcoming stuff, really quick, we have the Reedsville Night at the Swarm, which is on March 22nd, which we partner with you guys on that, we're very thankful for that. It's kind of our Rise Up Reedsville partnership, where we go out to the Swarm and make Reedsville known, and that's just our way of telling people that it's a, it's a great time, you can live in a great small town and still have that great feel of going to big city events. So if you like basketball, don't miss that event. More to come on t-shirts and tickets and all of that. Also, same today for the Administrative Professional Celebration, that is our staff appreciation, on April the 24th. We have a ton of new members. I will not read them to you, but I will also tell you that on a highlight of Turtle Creek Bakery and Deli, they will be open tomorrow for limited hours for their first day. So very excited about that. And the next coffee is the March Coffee, and that will be hosted by Reedsville Orthodontics on Front Street. And also, our member of the month was Sassy Southern Draw Boutique in downtown Reedsville. So if you get the chance, stop by and congratulate her. Any questions? Told you I'd be quick. All right, thank you.
Diane, thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Announcement of board and commission appointments.
Main Street, I've been aboard the Reedsville Dental Corporation, and made pre-regulizations, all of which have been approved by council across Apple, State Code, and area smia, and then also approved the Reedsville Parents Commission was Jay A. Hoffman, who will assert the EJ five year term. Now this will go to the paneling since it's going to be Jay position, and what's to be out there, and commissioning the work that it sees on board.
We're gonna move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to discuss real estate matter and a personnel pursuit to N. C. G. S. 143-318, dot 11A, 5 and 6. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We will not be returning to the council chambers, so thank you so very much for coming out to see us tonight and be with us. Have a safe travel home.